So at 3:30, I am going to call the meeting to order. This is a special Minneapolis City Council meeting, July 9th at 3:30. And I'm going to start out with introductions or roll call. Make sure everybody's here. I'm going to start out. I'm Lisa Whelan. I'm the mayor. Is Mike Molitor, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay. And Shannon Bruce, are you here?
I'm here.
John Trumperland, are you here?
I'm here.
All right. And then we have city administrator, Mike Barone.
I'm here.
We have a director of administration, Ally Paulsfoth.
I am here.
And city clerk, Chris Lindquist.
I am here.
And our consultant with Kennedy and Graven, our city attorney, Andrew Biggerstaff.
Here.
Thank you. So next, we have approval of our agenda. There is only one item on the agenda. It's approve and appoint of election judges. And then there'll be some discussion regarding the ballot board and some information, I believe, that Andrew will share with us. So first, we're going to start out. Do you want to take this, Andrew, first?
Madam Mayor, we need to two. I have a first and a second for the approval of the agenda.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't think we needed one since there's just one item. But is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Oh, moved.
Okay. Mr. Trumperland made that motion. And Ms. Bruce made the second. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye, Lisa Whelan, Mike Molitor.
Aye.
John Trumperland.
Aye.
Shannon Bruce.
Aye.
Okay. For all, let the record reflect that Tam Mortensen is not in the meeting with us today. So that's for all unanimous. So moving on then. Now to special, to the business item. And Ally, or do you want to hand that over to Andrew first? Or do you want to have, do you want to have any input first?
Um, I'll hand it right off to Andrew.
All right. Andrew, you're on.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. Good afternoon, first of all. And I put together just kind of a quick outline. We've, you know, we've been working with Mike and the rest of the staff pretty closely the last few days to go through some of these issues as they've come up and try to prepare for this meeting. So I think what I'm going to start by doing is just giving kind of a general overview of what the action items are in front of you today. And then, you know, certainly if anybody else has things to add, they can do so and we can hopefully answer any questions that come up. But as I'm sure you saw in the packet, the resolution that's been provided in the staff report that kind of outlines it identifies two activities essentially that the council needs to accomplish within a timeline that's provided by state law. The first of those actions is to appoint the individuals who will serve as election judges for the upcoming primary election. And the second action is to appoint the absentee ballot board, which is the folks who would essentially carry out the duties delegated to that body related to absentee ballot, you know, opening them or accepting and rejecting them and handling them and things like that. So included in the resolution is an exhibit that was put together that identifies the names of all the folks who are going to serve in the role of an election judge. And then those individuals would also be appointed to be members on the absentee ballot board. The, um, one of the questions that's come up, and I know that you all received a few minutes ago, a separate confidential document that identifies the party affiliation of each person. One of the questions that has come up relates to party balance requirements and things like that as required by state law. And as we, we've been looking at this and trying to determine what the obligations of the council are as appointing authority in relation to the election judge roster and the absentee ballot board roster and the party balance requirements. And from what we've determined, we are not aware of anything in the statute that requires the full roster of election judges or the full roster of absentee ballot board members to be party balanced. So for instance, we don't, I'm not aware of any statutory requirement that if you have 10 Republicans, you also must have 10 Democrats on those rosters. Rather, the time that party balance issues arise is when the individual groups of election judges or absentee ballot board members are carrying out their duties. So for instance, for election judges, you're required by law to have three or four election judges that are given precinct. And among those individuals, there must be party balance for issues or for reasons that you could probably come up with. The same is true for absentee ballot board members if and when the absentee ballot board is called into action to handle an absentee ballot that's delivered to the city. We were required in most cases to have at least two members of the board, one from each major political party, come in and carry out the duties. So a question was raised about whether the city could, whether the city council could appoint the election judges and ballot board members without, without seeing the identification, I guess, if you will, of their party affiliation. And in recognition of the fact that I think a lot of people may provide that information in, in the sense that they think it's going to be, you know, private or not generally known, we wanted to take a close look at that. And in reviewing the statute, we identified some language that made it relatively clear that those party affiliations can be provided to the appointing authority, which is the city council. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about that party balance requirement because when you look at those affiliations, like I said, it's not that it has to be 50/50 in terms of Democrats or Republicans, but rather you just need to have a sufficient number on the roster. And then in the future, whether it be on Election Day or whether it be on a day that the absentee ballot board has to take on some duties, will, we being the staff, would need to make sure that the folks who are being called into action meet those party balance requirements. So the information that was provided regarding the party affiliation is really tied simply to the statutory obligation that individuals who are appointed to the election judge roster provide a statement of affiliation. So that's that information. And then the final point that I'll make is that both, well, the resolution itself points out that Chris Lindquist, as the city clerk slash election administrator, would be responsible for, you know, ensuring that the statutory party balance requirements on Election Day or any other day when they're, when they're triggered would be met by, you know, the folks showing up, the folks that she calls in to work on those issues and things like that. So, so I think that's kind of the background. And like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions. But, you know, we spent quite a bit of time just trying to make sure that we're, you know, protecting the information that we need to protect, but also giving the council what it needs to make, you know, the appointment decisions. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll start out with just a question. So in other words, we could appoint all of the election judges and then also simultaneously, if you will, or concurrently, also appoint all of them as absentee ballot board members. Therefore, all of them would be eligible to, one, serve as election judges and, two, serve as absentee ballot board members. And it would be up to staff to determine where each election judge would serve and, like you said, the ballot board as well, making sure that there's that equal party representation. Is that correct?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. That's my, that's my interpretation of it. The, you know, with, with the election judges, you know, Election Day is a long day. Everybody may not want to work the whole shift. And so there's some, you know, there's some coordination that goes into making sure that you have and maintain those party balances throughout the day. But all that, you know, Chris would be doing on Election Day is pulling from the list the requisite number of people from each party and coordinating that to make sure that that's, that that's all being carried out. And the same is true for the absentee ballot board if and when they're called into action. So yes, the, the action that's being presented to you would be to appoint the election judges. And then those folks would also be, would constitute the absentee ballot board. And the requirements for the absentee ballot board, it just has to be election judges who are trained in absentee balances. By understanding they would get some training after this to be able to carry out those duties. But being appointed doesn't necessarily mean that everybody would be used. I mean, they very well could be. But, you know, it's always, I think, good to have some extra bodies in case someone gets sick or they've got to go pick up their kid or, you know, life happens. And having some extra folks that you could call in and make sure that you maintain the legally mandated number of judges or board members at any given time. That's, you know, that's, that's what we, that's where we would pull from in the future is these lists that you're being asked to approve today.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Council, I'll start with Mike Molitor. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. John Trumperland, do you have any questions?
A question of staff. If we agree that the 30, whatever there was, 32 names here, would serve both as election judges and could serve on the absentee ballot board as required, if those, if they all need special training or special, some type of additional training for the absentee ballot board, do we have, is there time available for all 32 to get that training?
That would be Chris. Maybe you can answer that? Did we? Hello?
I think she's probably got to unmute.
Okay.
Sorry about that. My phone, my, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay. Sorry about that. For some reason, my phone all of a sudden gave me a no service. So I'm back.
Okay. Did you, did you hear the question?
No, I did not, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hi, Chris. This is John.
Mr. Trumperland asked the question. Why don't you ask it again, John?
Oh, okay.
Chris, if we decide that everybody that's on the list that was part of our support are election judges and also can be deemed to be absentee ballot board members, and the absentee ballot board members need additional training, do we have the time to train 32?
Okay.
Uh-uh. Where?
I think, I think maybe it's my headpiece. So I'm going to disconnect my headpiece and see if that helps.
Okay.
Just a moment.
You're really garbled.
Oh.
Maybe we could do this. Ally, would you know the answer to that? I know that Chris does most of the training.
Hello?
But, okay. Are you there?
Madam Mayor, this is Ally. Chris can correct me if I'm wrong and when she gets back on the call. The absentee ballot board training is very short. It's just a short video to accept and reject any absentee ballots that were, would to be dropped off at City Hall. So yes, there would be enough time to train all 32.
Okay. And then there's also, is there also an option, if people don't want to serve on the ballot board, they would just let you know that?
Correct. So Chris's strategy is to, during election judge training, to ask interest of all of the election judges. They will email her if they are interested or not. And from there, she will contact election judges, trained election judges, train them. So they would all be trained as absentee ballot board members should they be called to convene.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Trumperland?
That's good. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Bruce, did you have any questions?
Yes. Mr. Biggerstaff, is, is the city clerk, does it require that we pass the resolution for the city clerk to allocate election judges and absentee ballot board members to their appropriate locations? Doesn't she have the authority to do that without a resolution already?
Madam Mayor and council member Bruce, yes, I think if I understand the question correctly, yes, I think you're right. The resolution before you is, is just to appoint the rosters of individuals who constitute the election judges and ballot board, absentee ballot board. And from there, you know, the election administrator is really the one who does the chess pieces on the board, making sure that the right people are in the right place in a way that satisfies the statutory minimums and the party balance requirements. So the resolution today is for the council as the appointing authority to create those rosters from which, you know, Chris would have the opportunity to start doing that coordination and planning.
Okay. I'd like just to call your attention to the last paragraph in the resolution. And I'd like to look at the language in that because I think it's overly vague. And it reads, it says, "Be it further resolved by the city that the city clerk is authorized to assign duties and functions to the appointees." I'm not sure what appointees means because we have election judges, absentee ballot board members, and elected administrators, election officials on that list. So I'm not sure what appointees means. And then it says, "as necessary to carry out primary election duties." That's not defined either. In compliance with all party balance as required by state law, that there are other laws that we have to comply with other than party balance, the process of appointing those people. There's a timeline that I'd like to talk about separately after we talk about this paragraph. But that was the purpose for my question about whether we need a resolution to authorize Chris to carry out duties, to put people where they need to be. If you look at, and I'm sorry, I'm probably losing everybody else except Andrew, but if you look at 204B dot 21 subdivision 2 towards the, at the very end of that subdivision 2, it says that the appointing authority may pass a resolution authorizing the appointment of additional election judges within, and I emphasize, within the 25 days before the election if the appointing authority determines that additional election judges will be required. So we're not within 25 days before the election. So, and I'm just wondering if this paragraph was trying to take care of having the city clerk appoint additional election judges if there weren't enough? And I just wanted to point out that we can't do that yet because we're not within the 25 days. And it also says that the appointing authority has to determine itself whether there are additional election judges or absentee ballot board members needed. It can't be...
Ms. Bruce, what's your, okay, what's, what's your specific question?
And I'm, I'm explaining my question to Mr. Biggerstaff, who is an attorney, and hopefully he can understand what I'm saying.
Well, I think, I think we can all understand what you're saying. Please don't belittle us. We understand what you're saying. What I'm asking though is, why do you feel that this sentence or this paragraph isn't sufficient?
Actually, what I'd like to do is take out the paragraph because I don't think we need to, we don't need to have language in there to tell the city clerk that she can do things that she's already authorized to do. And I believe that this paragraph, I also, you asked why, I believe that this paragraph essentially allows the city clerk to continue to appoint staff to serve as election judges or ballot board members because of the vagueness of the wording in this, in this sentence. Because appointees isn't defined and duties aren't defined. So I would like to take out that last paragraph from the resolution.
Mr. Biggerstaff, can I have you weigh in here?
Sure, Madam Mayor and council member Bruce. You know, I see, I see what you're saying. And, you know, the, the point about the statute, I understand your, you know, your reading of it. And I agree that, you know, we're not within that 25-day period. And if, if we got within the 25-day period and we recognized the situation that we didn't have enough election judges, say, say we needed 20 and, or I don't, say, say we five dropped out and we needed to find five more, the remedy at that point would be to do something like we're doing today and have the council meet to appoint those people. I think that's what the statute says. But that's not where we are in the process. We're, we're outside of the 25-day period. And the action before the council now is to appoint those, those rosters of individuals. So, so I understand the point, but I'm, I think it's something that would arise later if and when the staff determine that additional judges were needed. I think then we would need to come back and meet with you all to discuss that and hopefully have some additional people appointed. As to the language in the resolution, you know, I understand what you, what you're saying. You know, the, I would read it as sort of just a recognition that, that, that the staff is really the, or that the election administrator, Chris, is really the person who is responsible for doing all of the pre-planning and the coordination. You know, like anything else, reasonable minds can disagree about wording. But, I mean, to me, it's relatively clear that the appointees are the people being appointed to these bodies in accordance with the statutes that we're talking about. And the primary election duties, I mean, those are all, as I'm sure you're familiar, those are all outlined in the statute. So the absentee ballot board has essentially a checklist in 203B, I think it is, that, you know, if and when a ballot is given to the city, they need to convene, you know, two of them must convene, they must, you know, look at it, check it, compare it to this and that. And so those are the duties that are being outlined. I, I don't read this and I wouldn't interpret this as being sort of carte blanche for anybody to appoint additional election judges. But, you know, again, I suppose reasonable minds could disagree about that. But I think the intent of this language is simply to provide clear direction that from this point on, after if and when this list is approved, it's the staff that's responsible for ensuring that, that people are trained, that people are made available, they're told where to go, and that we do that in a way that not only meets the party balance requirements, but any other statutory requirements that exist. So, so that's the intent, I think. But, you know, like anything, it's, it's the will of the council. And if, if others don't like the language, then presumably we can, we can strike it. But that, that would be my read on it.
Is, do you have a problem with just striking the whole sentence because the city clerk already has the authority to do those things? What, what, I, I'd like to understand any concern for not striking it because if she already has the authority, there's no reason to have it in there. And my concern is about the word "the appointees" because we also have staff on that list that we're approving tonight on this resolution.
Right.
The appointees include staff.
Right. And I, and I understand the argument. And I know that that's an argument in the Minneapolis litigation currently. But like I said, I mean, my, it's not my intent or my, my reading of it to provide. I think there's a difference between appointment authority, which I agree, it rests with the council under 204B point 21, and administration, administrative duties, which I think is what, I think is what we're talking about in terms of, or at least in the sense of, you know, making sure the right people are in the right places. And that's how I'm reading that language. You know, frankly, just from, this isn't necessarily a great answer, but, you know, this is the way that I've always seen it done in terms of, you know, when, when the rosters are appointed, there's also, you know, a provision in these resolutions that provides that express authority to the, to the clerk to carry out or to the election administrator or clerk to carry out the duties under the law. So I think it's, it's appropriate in that sense. But, you know, thinking on my feet here, I can't, you know, like I said, I think it could, it could stay or it could probably go. I mean, I, I don't know if there's something in there that Chris would be particularly reliant on, you know, or that she feels is critically important. But, but that's kind of my read on it, just, you know, looking at it now.
Madam Mayor, remember?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah. I guess I would not have a problem removing that as long as that it's under the understanding that within that 25 days, if I fall short of party balance when I'm scheduling people and I have to start recruiting in that, you know, that 25 days to the primary, that, that it's understand, understood that I have that authority to get more people in. You know, I still haven't heard that.
Well, wait a second, Chris. Chris, I don't know that you have that authority. I think it would still, the way I read the statute was, if you fall short, then you can recruit, but those names still would have to come to the council for approval. That's my understanding as to how that would work. You would not have the authority in and of yourself to make those appointments or to appoint them as election judges. You would bring those names to the council. The council would then have the authority, which lies solely with the council, to make those appointments, those additional appointments within that 25 days. My understanding of the statute is this 25-day timeframe is in there for, you know, let's say you only have 10 judges, but you need, and five drop out for various reasons, then you need 10. Now you're scrambling and you can't meet the state statute. So the state statute has given the council a provision in order to make an exception to make an appointment more than that, within that 25 days. So maybe it's the day before, maybe it's five days before. But they're saying if you're, they're making a provision, an out clause or an option or an opportunity to be able to make additional appointments should you not be able to meet the state, otherwise meet the state statute. Andrew, is that pretty much what your understanding is?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I think that's a fair reading of the statute and that's, that's how I read it. There is, and, you know, Chris and I talked a little bit about this a few days ago, there is a provision in a separate statute that deals with vacancies among election judges. And there's a, a process by which, you know, the election judges would fill vacancies on Election Day that, you know, we could certainly look more into. But, you know, all of that, of course, is, is, you know, the next steps, right? None of that is really reliant on what we're doing today, you know, in terms of appointing the rosters. But I agree with you. I think that if, if, you know, we get two or three weeks from now and realize, or, you know, realize that, oh my gosh, you know, a bunch of these people have gone on vacation and they, they're not going to be able to make it, then I think we would be in a position where we would need to recruit some new people and get them approved by the council, you know, so that we can put them into the mix to make sure that we're, we're satisfying all these different requirements.
Thank you.
So, this is Shannon again. I, I'm hearing that there isn't a problem with deleting this language from the resolution. And so I'll go on to the last point that I have, which is, I believe that all the election judges must declare that they're with a party. I see some that say no party because when you assign them to the precincts, there has to be party balance. And you have to have, you have to have a certain number, like if there's, you know, six, three of them have to be of one party and three of the other. If you've got people that don't belong to a party, that throws off the party balance and you can't. So they, they have to, they have to declare a party to be an election judge. That's my understanding.
Mr. Biggerstaff?
So I think we've got, I think we have four people on that list that need to come off.
Well, I'm going to ask Mr. Biggerstaff on that. Mr. Biggerstaff, can you weigh in?
Certainly, Mayor and council member Bruce. I get, I get your point and I, I understand it. I don't know the statutory site for the precinct party balance, but we can certainly look at that as we ramp up for, for those issues. But the statute is relatively clear, I think, that the, the way that these lists were created is that the Secretary of State started by obtaining individuals who signed up, I believe or I understand, at caucuses to serve as election judges. The Secretary of State forwarded that list to the county, who forwarded it to the municipal clerk, and those lists were used first. When those were exhausted and more judges were needed, Chris went out and recruited other individuals. And the statute provides that an individual, in order to be appointed an election judge, must make a statement or a, an affiliate, a statement of affiliation with a political party or a statement that they're not affiliated. So I, I don't see an issue with having people on the roster who are not affiliated, the NPs, I think it was. But I, you know, I can certainly, we can certainly look at any requirements for party balance when it comes to the Election Day activities and ensure that if we do in fact need three Republicans and three Democrats, for instance, and, and we either don't have enough... or, you know, then we'll be back here trying to fill the roster again, I think, in due time. Or, we'll make sure that if that's the legal requirement, then that's what, I think, what we'll do.
Well, and I'm looking at 204B dot nineteen, and it says that at least two election judges in each precinct must be affiliated with different major political parties. So, you've got to have two of them at least in each precinct.
Right. And I do.
Right.
And I do. There is-
Yep. And this statute requirement is three to four, depending on what type of election where it is. So, I think the way that you could, I think the way that that drives is that you, if you need four, you need to have at least one Republican, one Democrat, and then two non-affiliated individuals. I think is the way the math would work.
Right. And the way it was explained also at our clerk's training is you have to meet that minimum. So, you have two and two, you have four. But, say that I need five in that precinct. I could have either a non-preference person. And keep in mind, we do have two other major political parties, but nobody signed up for them. So, if somebody came in from one of them parties, I would have to do that also. I'd have to, you know, if only one person comes, say, from the, I don't know, grassroots party, you know, that person also, we don't have that party balance because not a lot of people are, of course, choosing those. But, I would have to work that into the calculation, too. It's not just the Democrats and the Republicans. It also, we have to keep in mind, we have four major parties.
Well, and the statute says just different major political parties. It's the wording from the statute. So, I don't think it matters.
Right.
So, my question is, are we gonna have, go ahead.
No. All I was gonna say was, if I do do two and two, the way it was explained at our training was that we could have, say, two Democrats and then have two Republicans. And if you need one more person, I could put another Republican in there. But, I could not put four Republicans in against two Democrats. I can go, even number plus one. That's it. But, I could do, if I needed six people, I could do two Democrats, two Republican, or three Republicans and one non-preference. And then, with the duties that need, you know, party balance, like when they're taking ballots out and setting it up in the morning, the ballot counter, that's one Democrat and one Republican. And I let the head judge make sure that they have that, that they do that. And also for closing down at night, it's required that one of each party does that.
So, are we gonna have a similar meeting to this? Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
Does, so, are we gonna have a similar meeting to this prior to the general election? Or are these same people going to be the same people on the-
Um, I have, I, when I sent out the applications, I asked them for both the primary and the general. But, I have some people that only want to work the primary or that can only work the primary. And I have some people that can only work the generals. I try to train everybody before the primary because it gets really crazy between the primary and the general. But, I usually have at least one training session. So, I can add more people. And so, yes, we will have to have another meeting very similar to this discussion. But, it would be, the way the timeframe falls is we'd be able to do it at a regular council meeting to meet that twenty-five day before requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
And more than likely, the majority of the people that are on this list will be on that list.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the list, but to take out the last paragraph.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, second.
Okay, was, I'm sorry, that was Mike Mulliter?
No, this is John.
John, sorry. Okay, Mr. Chumpeland, thank you. So, we have a motion to approve the resolution with the attached, attachment of the election officials and election judges with removing the last paragraph, the last paragraph stating, "be it further resolved by the Minister of City Council that the city clerk, election administrator, is authorized to assign duties and functions to the appointee as necessary to carry out primary election duties in compliance with all party balance as required by state law." That is the one that would be removed. Are there any further questions or discussions? Okay, hearing none, then. I'll call, I'll make the roll call. All those in favor signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Chumpeland?
Aye.
And Mr. Mulliter?
Aye.
And I'm Lisa Whalen, the mayor. I will vote aye. Motion passes for all. And I believe that concludes our, our meeting, then. That's all we needed to do. Any other, Mr. Veroni, anything else?
I don't believe so, Mayor. I think we've accomplished what we need to accomplish.
Okay, great. All right, with that, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so much.
Motion was made by Ms. Bruce. Is there a second to adjourn?
Oh, second, that. This is Mulliter.
Okay, Mr. Mulliter, make that second. Then, all those in favor signify with aye. Mr. Mulliter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Chumpeland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And I'm Lisa Whalen. I vote aye. Motion passes for all. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.